Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Finance Administration Committee Meeting and special meeting of the Board of Directors of Marin Water. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, good morning. Director Ranjeet Kush.
Here.
Director Matt Sampson.
Here.
Vice Chair Monty Schmidt.
Here.
Chair Jed Smith.
Here.
And for the record, Director Larry Russell is currently absent.
Okay. Great. And I'd like to have a motion to adopt the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Great. Any public comment on the adoption of the agenda?
There are none.
Great. And then a roll call, please.
Yes. Director Kush.
Hi.
Director Sampson.
Yes.
Vice Chair Schmidt.
Yes.
And Chair Smith.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right. Any public comment on non-agenda matters?
There are none.
Moving on. Well, we have a busy meeting to...
Okay.
Terry?
The matter is with regards to whether or not there have been any evaluations of public opinion.
Okay, all right. Non-agenda matters. Okay.
Yes, non-agenda.
All right. Yes, Chair Smith, there's a...
We recognize a public comment.
Thank you.
So what I was... I mentioned, I started bringing this up during the previous meeting. What I was going to ask is whether MMWD has done, taken any action to find out whether the public opinion about increasing the water supply has changed ever since the rate increases were implemented. Because the public opinion, or public opinion's priority may be different in response to rate increases. They may start to be more concerned about rates and less concerned about the supply. I was just curious about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Great. All right. Now we'll move on to our regular items on the agenda. We have quite a busy packed day today. We'll try to do it as efficiently as we can. And like to see if there's a motion to approve the minutes of the Finance Administration Committee on October 26th. Do we need a roll call for that?
Yes.
Okay.
And there are no comments for that.
Yep.
Director Kush.
Hi.
Vice Chair Schmidt.
Yes.
Director Sampson.
Yes.
And Chair Smith.
Hi.
Thank you.
Great. All right. So now we'll move on to item 4B, and we'll welcome Vicky to present for the team for this item.
Good morning. I'm Vicky with the Human Resources Department, and I'm here to give an overview about our diversity, equity, and inclusion training, our employee engagement upcoming survey, just a brief update on that, and the status on 360 review evaluations. So currently staff are in the process of completing diversity, equity, and inclusion training. We started the training with the senior leadership team, and that served as a pilot group for the training. After that, we had follow-up discussions about the training, how we want to roll this out, and how we want to make this meaningful for district employees. And from there, we established a stakeholder group. And we have stakeholder meetings between June and November. For the stakeholder group, we advertised among staff, and we received, we had 10 volunteers from stakeholder group, and they came from different departments throughout the organization. So we had good representation throughout the organization. In October, we conducted a diversity, equity, and inclusion survey. And we had 140 employee respondents to the survey, which I think is a good number. And then November, we had took, taken that time to, for training, for developing the training content. And then December, we started with the district-wide training. So our stakeholder group, again, like I said, it was a mix of employees from different departments, and we met to discuss and review and customize a survey. We conducted the survey to identify training needs. And then from that, from those, from the results of the survey, we, it was, the DEI training was informed. And the stakeholder groups also helped us with rolling out the training and also with communication strategies. So it was a good team effort. So we had, from the DEI survey, we did get some results from the survey. Ninety-four percent of staff feel that their coworkers treat them with respect, and that coworkers respect each other's differences. Twenty-three percent, however, disagreed that the workplace is safe for all employees to express their differences. And in one question with select all that apply option, 71% marked that they never experienced any discrimination or bias, whereas in some cases, some employees felt they experienced gender bias, race, and education, I'm sorry, gender, education, age, and race bias in that, in that order. And again, it was a select all that apply. And there were 15 categories to select from. Thirty-five percent believe that most employees don't understand the difference between conscious and unconscious bias and discrimination. And so that's an opportunity right there for us. So while, again, like, most employees feel respected, 94%, there is an opportunity to understand the difference between unconscious and conscious bias, and how to interrupt that behavior if you see it. So we started diversity, equity, and inclusion training. We had 3.5 hours of interactive training for all staff. And we worked with a professional who is experienced with providing DEI and conflict resolution training. And to date, 195 employees have been trained. And we have another training schedule for March and one scheduled for April to train people who are on extended leave or new hires. So we're continuing the effort. So the training content, the training content started with a discussion about the elephant in the room. The elephant in the room, obviously, as we know, we understand the concept of an elephant in the room. But with respect to DEI training, the elephant in the room was breaking the ice on having a discussion about diversity, equity, and inclusion, speaking up in group settings, and sharing. So, so to make people feel more comfortable about that, they started with that to break the ice. They moved into team-building activities that led into discussions regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion foundations, such as, again, understanding conscious or intentional discrimination, and understanding when it's unconscious or unintentional, it's not intended. Learning about stereotypes and complexities around addressing them, how to understand hidden biases through self-awareness, where we're, we don't understand that we may be doing something. And, you know, behaviors to, how to understand, how to identify questionable behaviors, and when to get help from a manager or through HR. So, like I said, it was 3.5 hours of training. It was interactive. It included discussions, videos, team-building exercises. And, you know, the takeaway is that employees really, really enjoy the team-building exercises and learning about each other, which is helpful in learning about our differences. So with respect to learning about our differences. Post-training evaluation, 91% felt like they gained knowledge that would help them be more aware of their own biases when interacting with people that they serve, that, meaning our public, and also coworkers. Seventeen percent of the training participants didn't feel comfortable with sharing their experiences, and that goes back to the elephant in the room. It's not always easy to share. And 93% were satisfied with the training overall. So as we are completing the training, we also want to continue that, make sure that we're continuing our DEI efforts. One thing, again, like I said, that came out of the training was the team-building activities. Employees really enjoyed that. And again, that getting to know people also helps getting to understand differences. So we do, as a district, host employee events or recognition events, but this is an opportunity for us to add some team-building activities into those events, where people can meet people from other departments. Because naturally, when you attend an employee recognition event, you're going to sit with your coworkers, and you're going to have lunch with them. So, so there's an opportunity there. We want to ensure that our district personnel policies are inclusive, and that they reflect our DEI values. And we want to continue to build on diversity, equity, and inclusion, or diversity recruitment efforts, excuse me. Not outside of the advertising, but also having relationships with community-based organizations. And we do that. But when we did the Ranger training, it was a little bit more extensive, and I think it would be a good idea for us to lean on that type of outreach when we're recruiting for positions. So we're looking for using, using that as a model. So... And now I'm going to move on to another employee engagement activity.
Sure. Any comments on that part of the agenda?
I just want to reinforce the importance of something like the Ranger trainee position, because I'm sure you know that removing barriers to entry is the best way to address this issue. And if we can look for other ways to do that, I think it would be helpful significantly. So thank you.
Yes, thank you for that comment.
Vicky, I commend us for starting to measure where we are here. And the 35% number is a little disappointing, and 29% of folks that feel like they've experienced a problem. But most importantly, we're starting to measure it. And now we're implementing better training and procedures, so good for us. But now we need to keep measuring it. Let's, let's definitely have it as a goal to do better and come back. I don't know when, but will there be a measurement after you did this training on the similar kind of diversity and inclusion survey?
Not planned for that. We were moving to the engagement survey, which the engagement product does allow for pulses and DEI questions about diversity, equity, and inclusion.
I don't know what the right timeframe is, and maybe it's three, six months, but maybe we come back and have the same survey that they had taken before that training, and let's see how people are doing.
Yeah, I echo these sentiments, and just recognize that probably the best way to address this is to make sure that we have a diverse workplace. And so I know that we're, we're making efforts to reach out to, and when we do have openings, to make sure that we're really identifying all the places where we can advertise our positions. But I think if we can, on some sort of regular basis, if we can be looking at, how is our, how diverse are we? And looking at, because the real numbers that, to me, matter are the people who are here. They show what the result of how well we've done in recruiting people, how well we've done in retaining people. And so I don't know at what some sort of frequency that makes sense, where we can actually see how we're, we're doing over time. We know this isn't something that, that changes overnight, but we want to, we want to start bending the curve.
Understood. Okay. Any other questions on the diversity, equity, and inclusion activities? Thank you. Okay. So with respect to employee engagement, we, again, we were focused on the diversity, equity, and inclusion in November, and now we're focusing on engagement as we move forward. Our goal is February to launch an employee engagement survey. An employee engagement survey really, employee engagement is measured by how, it really focuses on how enthusiastic a person is about their job, their commitment to the task that they perform, their commitment to reaching goals, or helping the organization reach their goals. And a lot of that is fostered through connection with the organization, understanding their role in the organization, feeling, a feeling of belongingness, and ensuring that they have the tools and the resources that they need to do their work. And so our last survey was conducted in 2016, and much has changed in the workplace. There have been a lot of climate changes, in the workplace, climate changes with respect to the pandemic. After the pandemic, we had, you know, we changed the way we do business. We have a Zoom environment. We have limitations sometimes on how often we gather, or how we gather. There was the great resignation, the great reconsideration. So there's a new workplace climate out there. Telework changes the workplace culture. And not unique to, and none of these are unique, obviously, to us, but not unique to Marin Water. It's a high number of retirements. We've had 94 retirements since the last survey. And this is some, a number that all CalPERS agencies, this is a phenomenon that all CalPERS agencies were expecting and embracing, embracing themselves for, for this wave of retirement. So that does change the workplace. So for our survey, we met with three consultants to discuss our survey needs. And after that, we sat for demos, and we were joined by a union rep in the, in the demos. And we found that the Gallup survey would serve us best to meet our needs. It provides us an ability to compare past data to the current data that we receive, that we will receive. We would have more benchmark material to compare ourselves to other organizations to understand what's normal with respect to engagement and disengagement, employees' disengagement. And Gallup does provide some post-survey tools for moving forward. So we're going to move forward with that organization to provide an employee engagement survey. And then with respect to 360 reviews.
Sorry, began that one. When is that going to get done? I know our target was to have it done by the end of last year. So what's the new target date?
February.
February, okay.
And November last year, we focused on a DEI, and then we're going to move toward the employee engagement.
Perfect. Thank you.
So 360 reviews. So we're, those are currently underway. The 360 reviews for senior leaderships, the senior leadership team is completed. With the three, the senior leadership team, we sent out surveys for each team member to their direct reports and to their peers. And then after that, they, those were reviewed with the general manager with each person individually. In the process, we thought it may be a good idea to, to have some, some training around receiving and providing, oh, slide. Oh, okay. Thank you. I thought you were telling me to... It was this one, not this one. Okay. Okay. So, thank you, Ben. So we did conduct, like I said, this SLT surveys, and we're moving with the, moving forward to the mid-managers. We did discuss that with our mid-managers at a mid-manager meeting, that we would be doing this, 360 degrees surveys. But again, like I said, we want to pause and have a discussion and some training around how to receive 360 review comments and information, feedback, and how to give it, so that it can be a more effective process as we move forward. Those managers will be doing 360 reviews on the, for their supervisors. So we want to give them those tools as we move. And so that's the update on 360 reviews. And...
Great. Any, any questions on that? No, I know, Monty, you were helping us spearhead that, and it was important to you. I hope this is looking the way you'd like it to.
Yeah, I mean, I really appreciate this. This has been something that, for quite some time, I've, I've hoped to see the district integrate into our work, and I appreciate the work that, and the progress that's been made. I think that there's a lot of, my hope always with the 360 reviews is, is that it's a spirit of partnership between supervisors and the people they supervise and leadership, that it's an ability to, to strengthen a communication and relationships that, that bring out the best in people, not to catch the bad apples and be punitive. That, I know that that's often how reviews are looked at, and I think it's an old-school way of, of why these things were done. And it's, it doesn't reflect where we, where things have changed, and I think where we are going. And, and again, part of, you know, when we met on Tuesday, we were looking at our, our strategic plan and all the, the elements that are in there that are about the way that we want to build a, a district that has, is, that is a safe place, that's a place that's welcoming, that, where people feel included. This is part of that. I think that especially when our 360 reviews, part of the review isn't just, you know, did you do your core tenants of your job, but there's other parts, especially as a supervisor, to set tone and to, and to create a workspace that's, that's welcoming and productive. So I hope that our 360 review process, we have, it would be great to see how that, what that looked like, how, you know, what were, how were folks reviewed, and what were the, what were the, the elements of the review, just to have a sense of how are we gate, how were we measuring success? So if there's a way at some later point in time, we could see what that, what, you know, dive in a little bit more about what the 360 review process entails, and how, what kind of goals, and what the process looks like. I think that would be helpful for us to just have a better field beyond just seeing that, that these have happened. What is actually in the process would be, I would like to know that. I don't know if the other board members would like that as well.
Okay. Thanks. So, in summary, we are completing DEI training. Like I said, 195 employees have been trained to date. And we continue to incorporate DEI into our team-building activities and in the workplace. And we are preparing for a full engagement survey, and 360 reviews are underway. And that concludes my report, my presentation.
Great. Any comments? All good? Ranjeet?
Yeah, Vicky, thanks a lot for this presentation. You know, just to, some of the notes that were made, clearly the surveys show that we have room for improvement with respect to, you know, workplace perceptions around inclusion and equity. I think as, as was also noted, increasing the diversity of our workforce is going to be one of the issues, requirements potentially for addressing the needed improvements. But I'm, following the strategic planning process and the attention that was given to addressing diversity and inclusion, I feel like we're paying a lot of attention to this issue. And if we continue to pay that kind of attention, purposeful attention, we will make progress. It'll take, it'll take time. But I'm, I'm encouraged by how the district has been focusing attention on this, as it should be. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, good. I'm super appreciative of your work. Thank you for following through and looking forward to continuing. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other public, any public comments on Vicky's presentation, human resources presentation?
There are, there are none.
Okay, great. All right. So Brett will be presenting items 4C, 4D, and 4E. Annual Comprehensive Financial Report Auditor's Memorandum on the Internal Control and Required Communications for the Fiscal Year ended June 30th, 2023. Welcome, Brett.
Thank you, Chair Smith. As you mentioned, my name is Brett Upandam. I'm the district's finance director. I do have three items here, so we will move hopefully pretty quickly through them. First item, as you mentioned, is the presentation of our annual financial report. And before I turn it over to our auditor, I just did want to take some time to thank the team that does work on this throughout the year. So you see two of them here behind me, Shelley and Greg. We also have a team, our accounting staff led by Helen in the back, and they're working on this every month, every day, all year long. It's an ongoing process. We do it every year. Typically, the engagement starts around April with an interim audit, and then we're working hard through the summer to produce the final audit here in partnership with our external auditors. And so without further ado, I'll go ahead and start sharing my screen and introduce David Alvey, and he'll go through the actual report here. We'll be available for questions at the end.
Perfect. Great, thank you. So, good morning, board members. My name is David Alvey, and I'm a CPA and audit partner at Mason Associates, and we are the district's independent external auditor. Next slide, please. So my role every year is to come in and to render an opinion on whether or not we believe that the financial statements of the district are fair, fairly presented as they currently stand presented in your agenda packet. And I'm required to be independent, so have no business dealings with the districts whatsoever, and also to conduct the audit in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles of the United States. And just a kind of a really 30,000-feet-high-level overview, we come in, when we do our audit, we do it in two phases. The first is an interim phase, where we come in and we look at the internal control environment. So this is the checks and balances, to ensure that a single person cannot initiate, review, and book a transaction without some kind of review, some kind of mitigating step. Because if a person could do all three of those, there could be an instance where there would be an error or some kind of, something that needs to be corrected. So that would be an item. So like, when we're doing our interim testing, we're looking at dispersments, so checks. We're looking at payroll, journal entries, cash receipts. And if, if a transaction that we find is not following the district's policies and procedures for a $100 check, that would hold enough clout as if it was a $100,000 check. So we want to make sure that the bones of the internal control structure are solid. And then that gives us an idea of what we need to do once the books are closed. So when we come about for the second phase, that's final, that's when we're looking at the balances and testing those balances of cash, you know, sending confirmations to your banks. We're looking at pension, the other post-employment benefits, capital assets, those type of things. And after we get all of our work done, and we ensure that the financials are free from interim statement, we issue a report and, or our opinion. And I'm pleased to say that on page 45 of your agenda packet is our audit opinion, and it is a unmodified or clean audit opinion, and that's the highest level of assurance that a CPA can confirm, can give an entity. So congratulations, you passed your audit. Next slide, please. Just a couple of financial highlights on page 14 and 15, or page 58 and 59 of your agenda packet. But on your statement of net position, also sometimes called the balance sheet, your net position at the year ending June 30, 2023 was 267 million. That was a 13.2 million over last year. A couple of things I do want to point out, though, the pension and other post-employment benefits liability did increase quite substantially. The pension by 35 million, and the OPEB by 10 million. And that really has to do with accounting treatment for those liabilities. And it's really not a movement of true cash, but it's just how the market swung over the past two years, whereas the pension liability dropped quite a bit last year, and now it's kind of catching back up and increasing back to the levels that it was in 2020 and 2019. Next slide, please. So looking at your statement of revenues, expenses, and change in net positions, your revenues, 104 million exceeded your expenses of 91 million, and that, that was that, that 13.2 increase in your net position. And a lot of it for the operating revenue, the increase was due to the 4% increase in water sales that took effect in July of 2022, and also connection charges increased by 1.1 million over prior year. And so that gives you that operating revenue increase of 6 million or 6 and 1/2, 6.6%. Your operating expenses also increased by 8.3 million or 10%. And that really has to do with, like I said, that change in how the accounting treatment deals with the pension and the other post-employment Gatsby 68 and 75 journal entries, so not real cash. But then there's also an increase in premium, insurance premium costs and other construction and paving projects. Your non-operating income decreased by 2.1 million, and that was due to federal grant money that was received last year in 2022 for that arrears program from 2022. So that's why that dropped off. Next slide. So we also are required, under government accounting standards, to issue a memorandum on internal controls and required communication. Now, this is my firm's discussion or communication with this governing body about things that we found during the audit. And they can be categorized in three ways. A material weakness, so that means something can flow through the internal control environment. the internal control environment and not get caught. We have none of those. A significant deficiency, something significant can flow through the internal controls and not get caught. We have nothing to report there. And then the others is to catch all things that we want to bring to your attention. And the only thing we have in that section under other matters is upcoming government accounting standards, sport pronouncements. Nothing coming down the pipeline that's going to be a major effect on the district's financials, not like the pension or the other post-employment in the years past. The second half of this document is the required communication. So I'm required to tell you that we had no disagreements with management. We had no issues with management's accounting assumptions or accounting estimates for depreciation, you know, fair market value of assets, useful life or capital assets, those type of estimates or assumptions. We don't believe that our scope was limited in any way. We don't think that management was trying to withhold information from us. And we don't think that management had another CPA firm in the wings, just in case they didn't like our audit opinions. We don't think there was a second opinion. Next slide. And with that, just like to open up to any questions you might have. I want to thank Brett, Shelley, Helen, and Greg for all their help and and open up to any questions you have about the audit process or what I do.
Anyone?
Just first, you know, I I don't know how audits have gone in the past, obviously. This is, you know, the first time that we're going through this, but I do want to note from other experience that having a clean audit is a really important accomplishment. So I think everyone should just just recognize, you know, how meaningful that is for the district. So great to see. Congratulations, Brett and team. That's great. You know, we, I I know we talk about this every, some of these issues, financial issues every month in our financial reports. And we certainly look at pension and OPEB liabilities on a regular basis. You know, and we we know that these are highly dependent on markets. And Brett, maybe you'll come back to this later. We can pick it up another time. But I'm just just curious to, you know, given the improvements in the market recently, are we going to see now another, are liabilities going to start to, you know, flatline or even come down again? And, you know, just just curious about that.
Sure, I'll take a quick shot at that. And then David, if you want to add anything as well. I think within terms of pension and the market impact, it's always a snapshot as of June thirtieth. So there's been many years where you have ups and downs in the markets throughout the year. But the final result is wherever it's at as of June thirtieth in the CalPERS books and then also in our retiree healthcare books. And so it seems now that the market is doing well, but I think we just have to wait until the end of June and find out where that's at, and then that that plays through. So there's that piece of it. And then, you know, I think as David alluded to, there's the accounting treatment that recognizes it all to make sure we're being compliant with GASB. And then there's the cash impact that CalPERS puts on us for their required contributions. And so the cash impact is usually more smoothed. They have some smoothing policies now that try to mitigate that over time. Whereas the accounting impact, the GASB pronouncements, those will recognize it each and every year. So I think what what David was starting to talk about there is that last year, we recognized a gain due to the favorable twenty twenty conditions. This year, we had to kind of unwind that a little bit. And since they were so large in the sense of, you know, in scope, large and and large returns and large losses, it really makes for a big swing. But ideally, we're trying to kind of find that nice stable, you know, go go forward look, especially for planning and especially for the cash impact on the district. And David, I'm not sure if you had anything to add to that answer.
No, that's exactly correct. We're really at the mercy of, for pension, at least for CalPERS, what the actuaries are saying. And they've been slowly ticking down their long-term rate of return, but we're always a year behind. So in twenty twenty, when the market swung, and then twenty twenty one, when it swung back the other way, that really caused a huge variance in all entities for that are under CalPERS or pension related. And the GASB sixty eight had things built into it to try to smooth those, as was deferred inflows and outflows. And it was so vast, it couldn't even keep up with that. So we're kind of, like I said, as of June thirty, we have to book those as presented.
It's helpful for me to understand that we're not looking at this in real time. So we we're looking backwards and it's going to take until next June to understand how we've landed this year. Thank you.
David, I'm I'm curious how deep into the transactions and inputs into the, I guess, our general ledger, you you dove. What was your sample size? I mean, even in A plus audits, usually auditors find some errors, but but it sounds like there were none, or is that part of your scope?
Right. We, when we do our sample size, it depends on what level of risk assessment we need. If the inherent risk is very high, then we have to have a high control risk to to mitigate that. So it depends on what section we're looking at. Typically, our sample size is anywhere between twenty five and forty. And again, we're looking at those checks and balances in the, you know, just in during our interim phase, during the transactions, mostly heavily around cash receipts. Dispersment, payroll, and journal entries is always considered kind of a higher risk area.
So dozens of, you know, random samplings? Or how do you go about it?
Yeah, twenty five to forty is our usual sample size. If if we find that we have exceptions and we still need to have a lower risk of material misstatement, we increase those. We have this whole matrix that we follow. But in terms of how we select our sample, I kind of hold that back a little bit. I don't like to disclose how I do it. But I I do, you know, I'm not just going to pull your telephone bill or something like that, something that's kind of a little bit lower risk. But I'm also also taking into effect your policies and procedures. So if you have certain dollar thresholds built into your policies and procedures, sometimes I I look closely around those as well.
And and no errors?
No errors.
Okay, awesome. Next question, I I don't think it's in your scope. And I'm wondering if it might, if we might consider having an audit view of our compliance needs for insurance, for reserves, and and for other maybe non-GASB concepts that that we're all beholden to, or how we think about that that part of oversight.
And that's not within the scope of our audit. We we more look at like, you know, making sure that you're compliant with all your debt debt things, but not necessarily. In terms of risk assess, risk management, like insurance, we just make sure our scope is looking at there's not any undisclosed liabilities there, where we're not really looking so much at the the reserve amounts, just making sure there's no undisclosed, like, you know, liabilities. And we do that by looking at your loss runs and then also you're getting confirmation from your your legal team.
The only thing I would add there, I think that's exactly right, is that, you know, we do get outside, you know, evaluations and audits from those other agencies, from our bondholders, from our insurance agencies. And the document that David helps us produce, this CAFR, is the basis for that. So this is one of the first things I look at, and it basically says, yes, the underlying reports you're about to receive are accurate. And then they can do their own analysis from there.
And and we report out on that at a different, not at the this audit meeting, but at a different time, right?
Those are less formal. Those are more, so they're just checking on us as part of our required ongoing disclosures.
Okay. Last question is, is I'm used to having a true audit committee that would meet with the auditor at some point. And 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 often, the management would step out of the room and the auditors would have an opportunity to just comment how things are going, anything that they would see, which would be, you know, kind of a true oversight. Given the fact that we're in such a good place right now, this is not a question about the integrity of the organization. But I know at Marin County, you had some level of that kind of activity, and I'm wondering how we think about it. And if we did, it might make sense to for us to have an ad hoc audit committee that would have the president and the chair of the finance committee that would be able to meet with the auditor. I'm not firm about it, but I'm curious about how agencies like us work in that regard.
It's it's really your pleasure. There's really no requirement for us as an audit firm to do that. We have a required communication. That's the piece that the second half of this item. And that's really the kind of opening up the the communications. I mean, I hope that if you have any concern that you would reach out to me as soon as that that happens and not just, you know, a one-time-a-year meeting. But but if that's what you want to do, there are some agencies that I audit that do still do that.
I I think it makes sense. It's just, you know, if if the auditor is finding an issue with someone and and we're not saying that that is happening, this would be a difficult meeting to say say that. So I I do think it's typical to say, they're doing well, they could do better here, we can help you recruit or or whatever it is. I think it's, I think it's a healthy thing to do for an organization.
I have a comment.
Larry Russell has a comment on on the board. Welcome to the meeting, Larry.
Thanks. I've been here a while. But the, I think your comment is an interesting one, Jed. I can't see any downside to doing that offhand. I don't know about a benefit. And I think the difference here is the amount of transparency in a public agency. And and answering Ranjiv's comment, I've been through nineteen of these prior to this one. We've never received a bad one that are any any negative comments at all that I can recall through a series of different auditors. So I I think it speaks well to Brett's group and the organization of that group in in keeping things on the up and up. So I think that we appreciate the work that David and his folks have done. But it's, at least from my aspect.
Larry, you cut out.
He's out. Oh, wait, he's jumping back on.
I seem to be there, but I'm back. I don't know where it stopped. Maybe it's not important.
You were talking about your experience in nineteen.
Okay. Nineteen, yeah. That's where I cut off that long ago. Anyway, what I was trying to say is that my experience has been good through all of those audits and that there are fundamental differences between a private company and a in a public agency. So, you know, in the bottom line is, I think the idea of an ad hoc committee is reasonable. I don't know how much benefit there would be, but it surely wouldn't hurt anything.
Maybe just one comment on 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 the proposal for an ad hoc. I think for those that, you know, of us that really want to ensure our understanding of how things work, that that that's an added benefit for that type of engagement. So I would be certainly in favor of that. And so maybe just, you know, what process we have for kind of just making a decision on that.
Ben definitely will be your feedback. I mean, this is the kind of thing that typically would be like a once-a-year meeting, but yeah.
Right. I I think maybe an approach going forward would be at the next finance committee, we would bring a review of how other agencies in our industry do this and the sort of audits they do and the governance of that and bring a recommendation or some options based on that survey of kind of best practices out there.
I I do have one more comment, Jed.
Larry, go ahead.
It seems, it seems to me there is one thing we can do that wasn't discussed. And in terms of the pension is to start setting aside more money in reserve. That is an option we have. We can do that. It's just a question of desire. So that's the one tool we have in our toolkit that we haven't used very much. So keep that in mind.
But but to clarify, I think with our new reserve policies, we have increased the amounts we're putting aside for pensions. Is that is that correct? Or even setting up additional reserve funds?
So yes, I think we were taking steps in that direction, and I think we've defined kind of the the minimums and the target balances for the pension reserve. I think the the one we have currently, you know, with with the last policy changes is more of the stabilization reserve. And so to kind of mitigate some of these swings in the market, as opposed to, I think, what Director Russell's speaking of, which would be kind of more of an investment reserve, where we're trying to make more on our on our cash. And I think we've talked about it in a couple of different meetings, you know, the the merits and demerits of that. And it's something that some agencies do. And so I think we'll we'll bring that back to the board at some point here this next summer when we have more decisions to make with our with our cash.
I don't know that that's correct, Brett. I pushed to get that set up under Krishna, and it was set up solely to, in my opinion, to us, the long-term liability. It never got refunded. It's still a two million, the same two million that was put aside eight years ago or so. So it it could be interpreted the way you interpreted it. I wouldn't object to that interpretation, but I don't think that was its root.
Okay, I'm good with your timeframe. They come back to us with the recommendation there. Larry, is that all right with you? The June timeframe?
All right. I couldn't hear it, so I don't know what it was.
We'll follow up. We'll follow up with you directly.
Okay.
Okay. Any public comment on the audit report that we just heard?
There's none.
Okay, great. This is just an information item, so no approval right now, but we can move on to the next agenda item, which is for D. Do we need a recommendation to the board for approval of this? Okay. Okay, great. So monthly, monthly financial update. Thank you, Brett.
Okay, so item D here, this is kind of more of a regular monthly update here, as as implied by the by the slides. So we are now reporting six months through the year as of December thirty first, so fifty percent of the fiscal year. You'll probably be pretty familiar with these charts by now this year. Revenues, you can see there, you know, total revenues at fifty two percent, water rate revenue at fifty one point eight percent, generally tracking. I'll have another slide here on the the details behind that. And capital revenue is the same with more kind of a fixed base there. We expect that to be right in that fifty percent range. So top line revenues are are looking as expected. And taking that deeper dive here that we we do each month into each of the kind of components of our of our rates, water sales there on the left, service charge, watershed fee, and then capital maintenance fee. I would just kind of direct you to that, you know, November, December timeframe. That's the two. Just as a reminder, we we have not come to to a finance committee since, you know, November, December timeframe. So those are the two new inputs. And you can see the actuals beginning to lag a little more. We were a little high in the summer compared to the budget, a little lower in November, December. And the budget really just is kind of our best guess, right? We're all kind of generally trying to formulate a projection here with weather, with with the timing, with demand, and with the new rate structure. We're still kind of getting our inputs for when to expect these revenues. But, you know, they all tend to even out over time, and that's kind of what we're looking at as a long-term trajectory. And so, you know, even though we've had two months of a little bit lower than expected, you know, water sales revenues on the left there, if you kind of skip down to the bottom, you know, we're still fifty three percent linearly on the budget. And then where we would expect to be now, you know, when you count in seasonality, we're at ninety seven percent of budget. So again, within a couple of percent either side of a hundred percent is where you want to be. Service charge there, again, very similar, you know, that's more of a fixed fee. So we're we're tracking closer to that hundred percent each month and ninety eight percent at the bottom line there. Watershed fee, a hundred percent, so we're right on track, and capital maintenance fee, just a tick below at ninety eight percent. So overall, those add up to being in a range where we're pretty comfortable right now in the sense of, you know, tracking to where we expected to be this time of the year. And given the fluctuations and the uncertainty, we're in a pretty good space there.
Brett, can I ask a quick question? Sorry, on that last slide on the watershed fee. So halfway through the year, I think probably it's not enough time, but maybe towards once we get to the end of this year, determine how much that fee has brought in with a new way we're collecting it compared to way it was as a fixed charge would be interesting data point comes over time.
Yeah, definitely. I think switching that, like you said, from a fixed fee to volume metric is certainly one of the bigger changes in the rate structure, and so we'll keep an eye on that.
Brett, do you do you have any insight on December? I I mean, I I get we're not going to get a hundred percent every month because that would be perfect forecasting, but seventy eight percent is seems quite substantial of the difference over what we would expect. Given we're not, it it's mostly indoor watering at that point. So our, you know, whereas during the summer, we, you know, hot stretches and and cool stretches and so forth have a bigger influence on sales. But in by December, for the most part, we're looking at interior water use, and it seems like that would be more stable. Any thoughts about that?
Yeah, you you know, I I think it's, it was a little bit early to try to draw a lot of conclusions from it. It did start to surprise me, you know, it kind of raised my eyebrows a little bit, just being in that seventy mark. But, you know, my my instinct tells me here that it just is, you know, part of us, you know, the budget is set there based on the last couple of years of demand overall. And now we've kind of layered on a little bit different of a rate structure in terms of where the tiers are. And so, you know, I think if I was to guess, I would say that, you know, stability in the past in the in the wintertime, kind of with a huge tier one, meant something different than having stability now with a tier one that's smaller and then a tier two in the middle. So you're kind of getting people right in between that tier one and tier two, going back and forth. And so I think on a low month, I'm about to show a low month of overall use, we just coalesced more into tier one. A good thing overall on use, but it really kind of, you know, took away, you know, some of that accelerating tier two revenue. And so I think that's just, that's the best I can say for now until I see another month of that. It's just, you know, it's almost like it decelerates faster, you know, kind of in the in the winter months in terms of overall revenue. So we may just need to adjust the budget expectations there. But as I'll see in this slide here, it's 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 Um, but as also you hit this slide here, it's 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 actually, you know, still because we're kind of lower than overall expected, you know, consumption. And so I'll I'll want to see another month of that before I make a definitive conclusion. But I I take your point in the sense that seventy eight percent is is a pretty big, you know, kind of miss on a monthly basis. And so, you know, hope we don't get that far low again in the next few months. But so just continuing again, I I started to get to this slide. This is our as of December acre feet total. So this is kind of agnostic of, you know, any any tiers or kind of month over month, you know, variability. But we are seeing a steady kind of return back to normal, although we still are about nine percent below that that ten year average for kind of six months through the year. I believe we are are about five percent above last year. So again, within that kind of expected range where we thought we might be this time of the year. Uh, again, you know, setting the rate structure up, knowing that we're going to be below this long term average for the next couple of years. And then just quickly on the expense side, we are, you know, continuing to see expense savings, especially in in the personnel area and the capital area. So personnel services, as we're trying to to, you know, return back to full hiring, we're a little bit less forty six percent as opposed to fifty there. Um, the rest of them are all a little closer to the fifty percent range, as you would expect. Um, capital allocation, that line there is really kind of driven by staff time, so you'd expect that to track close to staff. Um, and then capital there at the bottom, you know, we've begun to encumber funds on projects as we're awarding contracts. Uh, we're still are waiting to actually spend the cash. So I think, you know, construction season slowed down here in the wintertime, or expect that to increase more towards the spring and the summer and into the second year of the budget. So in summary, our revenues, you know, through six months are consistent with our adopted budget. Um, our operating expenses are tracking slightly below the budget, um, with capital expenditures tracking even lower um, due to the timing of construction cycles. Our total water consumption is slightly below budgeted amount, but really right in the right range, um, four point six percent above last year, but still about nine percent below historical averages. And so that completes my presentation on the monthly update. I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Matt?
Just a quick kudos without the outlier of December of this year. Just want to say appreciate the the forecasting you did as we go into this new rate cycle and then water use to make sure that we're within budget. So thank you.
Great update, Brett. No surprises. It's good to see.
Uh, yeah, nothing bad. I meant my question about December, I I kind of, I feel like when we look back over as we try to forecast, we are trying to forecast having been through some of the driest years in in our communities, near term record um, with, you know, changes in in our rate structure, how that's all going to lay out, I I I can understand why it's difficult. And 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 dealing with demand, you know, I I just, it's really, I know there's a lot of moving parts that make it difficult to forecast. So appreciate this and looking forward to what we see in the in the coming months.
Great. Any any public comment on the monthly financial update?
Yes, we have two.
Oh, sorry, Larry, did you have any question, any comments? Okay, public comments.
Yes, we have.
No, no, I didn't.
Thank you. Uh, the first one, Topher Gaylord, and then Ed Jameson. Go ahead, Mr. Gaylord.
Thank you. So, um, twenty twenty four continues to prove to be one of the largest rate increases in the history of MMWD for district rate payers. I'd like to ensure the board members are aware of true comparisons of fiscal year twenty three versus fiscal year twenty four, as those comparisons are not easily provided by the finance reports. At the six twenty twenty three board meeting in June, MMWD board approved the twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five budget. On one, on page one thirty nine of the board packet, the rate revenue was budgeted a hundred and thirty one million and a twenty two point two percent increase versus fiscal year twenty three budget of one hundred and seven million. The board assumed at that meeting that the rate revenues and impact rate payers would be expected to be a twenty two point two percent increase in line with what they had communicated during the rate adjustment in the May board meeting. In today's finance committee uh, agenda packet are the audited financial reports for fiscal year twenty three with actual rate revenues of ninety six point seven million dollars as referenced on page fifty three of today's agenda packet. The budget rate revenue of one hundred and thirty one million for fiscal year twenty four represents a thirty five point eight percent increase in rate revenue versus fiscal year twenty three. The thirty five point eight percent increase is the actual impact the district rate payers in aggregate are experiencing every day with their bills. Since the new rates have been fully absorbed in September, aggregate water sales and fees have increased at the following level as seen in today's packet on page one thirty nine, section four. And September was up thirty five point six percent, October up forty five point three percent, November up forty point seven percent, and December up twenty four point five percent. If those are actuals versus last year's actuals, January is budgeted to be up thirty three percent, February plus forty six, March plus forty, April plus fifty three, May plus fifty seven, and June plus fifty eight. I'd strongly recommend the finance group provide the board and the public more simplified comparisons of actual to actual results with percentage change and implement a budgeting process that ensures board members understand the comparisons of fiscal budget versus prior year actuals, not prior year budget. Eleven months of actual rate revenues had been realized in June of twenty three, but an outdated budget comparison was used for budgeting, not actuals or forecast values. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister Jameson, please.
Yes, thanks. Only a small part of the December bills would be December usage, but my December usage was way below normal. We had very unusually regular rainfall throughout December, and I completely turned off my drip irrigation. I've never been able to do that before, with normal years having stretches of two to three weeks without rain. This year's December and January has been very unusual in terms of rainfall patterns. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further speakers.
Okay, great. Well, that was just an information item, and we'll move on now to item four E.
Okay, I do not have a presentation for this. This is our required quarterly investment report. Um, and so I would also just like to know that due to the calendar, we're talking about as of end of September, so this is our first quarter investment report. Um, we will have our second quarter investment report next month for you. And so, uh, kind of have to remind you, we're we're jumping back and forth from, you know, fiscal year end on the first item now to, you know, September quarter end and, you know, kind of, uh, we just finished our December report. But for the September report, it's all good news here. Again, pursuant to our policy, our investment policy number thirty three, we do this each quarter for the board. Our our pooled cash is about sixty one point nine million at the end of September. Um, that includes the majority of our funds in LEAF, the local agency investment fund. Our fiscal year fiscal year to date interest as of September was four hundred and ninety seven thousand. Um, and I would just note that 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 is in contrast to one hundred and seventy nine thousand the year before. So we're, you know, nearly tripling our overall investment income just through the first quarter. And that's just seeing this kind of continued rise in terms of rate of return that LEAF is giving us as they are continuing to turn over their investment portfolio for the for the new higher interest rates. So it's all really good news in general that our investments are returning more for the district, and we expect that to continue throughout the year. I think as we as we see our second quarter report next month, and then especially our third quarter report later in the year, we'll start to see these numbers and these trends continue. So happy to answer any questions if you if you if you have any here, otherwise it's a pretty straightforward quarterly report.
Great. Questions? All good. Public comment on the quarterly investment report?
There are none.
Great. Well, that was also an information item, and we'll move on to item four F, please.
Just pull it up for me. Thanks. All right, so what's this? Oops, I clicked on that one.
Okay, good morning, Chair Smith, directors. I'm Molly McLean, General Counsel for the District. Um, and I have a presentation for you this morning um, to review our board compensation and travel reimbursement policies. Okay. Um, so our agenda for today, it's it's um, it's, there's a lot to unpack here, so I'll try to move through it quickly. We're going to review the board compensation policy, legal requirements, um, look at some comparable agencies and how they approach this issue, as well as consider some possible revisions. We'll do the same for the board travel reimbursement policy. And then we'll have a brief discussion of future items that I'm looking at bringing to the the Finance Administration Committee slash Board um, on a few different issues that I think would be helpful and have been requested for review. Um, so let me start with the board compensation policy. And this is the current policy review. And I just want to say first that I want to acknowledge the fact that the directors on the board spend a lot more time than um, is sort of represented in our compensation policy or recognized by our compensation policy. So I, none of you, I think, are are here because um, you're going to get paid extremely well. It's your dedication to your community and a public service that you provide. And so I don't think that, you know, I just want to acknowledge that this isn't really about that. This is specific um, to compensation paid by the district for your time. And then also I think that there's a lot of accountability and transparency in the public sector. So we really do examine it. It's available for the public to look at in all respects. So with that, the compensation policy was last approved by the board in two thousand and six. The purpose is to establish a consistent policy for compensating directors for meetings and other district business. Um, it works in tandem with our district code, section two ten zero six zero, which addresses specific compensation amount of two hundred dollars for each day of service rendered, not to exceed ten days per month. The policy sets forth a list of meetings eligible for compensation. It's a bit outdated, and we'll dig into that in just a second. Um, also identifies or district business as authorized by the general manager. So here's our current list that's actually embedded in our policy, which recognizes attendance um, at meetings for board meetings as well as committee meetings. And you'll note that we have one meeting on this list in red highlighted, that's no longer active, two in green that are not officially recognized. Um, as well as payments, and this is where you see the language here. I don't know if I can use my mouse for that, but um, the additional language that um, recognizes or other district business authorized by the general manager, but also highlighted in red where we're sort of out of sync because it's been a while since the policy's been updated. So it's good that we're here. So legal requirements. There are legal requirements that are specific to water districts. Um, so I I focused on those. They're different than the allowances for counties and municipalities. So I thought it was important to really focus in. I didn't realize that actually the water code sections that apply to compensation for board directors doesn't allow monthly stipend amount, actually dictates per diem payments. Um, it does require that the compensation be approved by ordinance um, of the agency at a public hearing. We've talked about public hearings before. What does that mean? When do we have to have a public hearing versus just a regular agenda item? Public hearings require special notice in the paper and a little bit more formality. And I did explain that it's when required by statute. This is in fact one of those situations when it's required by statute. Um, the statute actually says that the the ordinance wouldn't become effective until sixty days following adoption. And it limits the increase of compensation to no more than five percent annually. Um, it also caps the number of days for which compensation can be paid. Government Code Section um, five three two three two point one, which actually does apply across the board to all agencies, talks about when compensation can be paid. Um, it recognizes meetings of the legislative body, so board meetings, special board meetings, meetings, meetings of advisory bodies such as committee meetings or other outside agency advisory committees, um, conferences or trainings or other occurrences as adopted by policy. So we do have a policy. This is just a look at some of our comparable agencies. Um, and I want to thank Jared Mills and Terry Gillan, our our board secretary, for helping with some of the research. It's not always easy to dig through all of this and find it in different websites. As you know, I did try to focus on water districts. We do list a couple of cities in the in the region just for comparison purposes, though they are stipends, monthly stipends rather than per diem payments. Um, and we also note County of Marin. It's very common, though, for Board of Supervisors to be paid as full time employees and annual salary. So that's pretty different. But you'll notice the the per diem amounts range, but they're not too far off except from Contra Costa Water District, um, which is still at a hundred dollars and hasn't been updated since twenty fifteen. You'll note that East Bay Mudd, even though it's a district, has a monthly stipend. Um, that's actually kind of an interesting story. They have special legislation that was adopted to allow them to deviate from the water code sections. And their monthly stipend is currently fifteen hundred thirty dollars a month. So, um, I also want to do a little bit of a summary comparison about how other comparable agencies approach when compensation is paid, for what event or occurrence. So all of them cover, not unexpectedly, board, um, committee, ad hoc, outside agency advisory meetings, board meetings, of course. That's across the board. There are other types of meetings and events, and they vary. The the language with respect to how they identify when compensation is paid varies all the way from one end of the spectrum. We have West Basin Water District that says reasonably necessary to further the interest of the district. Lacks some specificity, all the way to Alameda Water District, which has an attachment A and is quite specific. So have a little bit of a range. Most water agencies would identify other categories that may not be listed um, with prior board approval. And one at least that I found Eastern Municipal actually has a list of excluded events, but that's not very common. So those are ceremonial, social clubs, things like that. So I want to focus on kind of the two areas where we've been, that we've been looking at and where there may be considerations for changes. The first is a compensation amount. Um, as I indicated, um, in this table shows, the two hundred dollars was put in place in twenty sixteen, has not yet, has not been increased since that time. The five percent allowance would take it up to two hundred and eighty one dollars and forty two cents. Um, if there were a change, that would be done by ordinance, adopted at a board meeting, public hearing. So that's just to show the allowance. Other areas of possible revision. I think it would be uh, wise to update the policy to include a list of categories for compensation. I think we could also tie part of that to our board and committee appointment list. That happens every year by necessity. Um, it's built into our practice and in our policies. So that would be a way to have it be current every year without having sort of an outdated list, um, which is what we're looking at now. Um, we can include the categories of conferences pertinent to district business, legally required trainings for board members, and other categories of events to be compensated. And there's some amount of discretion, but common to see um, when presentations or speeches or or, you know, you're on a panel at a community group or an association within the district and helping to educate our constituents. Um, or you're meeting with other public agencies on district business. Um, another category that's not specified here, it's not meant to be an all inclusive list here, um, is when you're, you know, meeting with executive director or other, you know, key staff folks, you know, getting educated on specific issues. Um, so that's looking at updates, changes to our when is compensation paid section. The other consideration for the board is to update the amount of compensation to the current allowance, since that has not been done since twenty sixteen, and that goes back to the prior slide. Do have a cap on that, that could be increased. Other considerations, updating reporting or review process. Currently, we have a Currently, we have a reporting process. Each board member submits the events that they participated in that are eligible for compensation. There's a review of that that's submitted to our board secretary on a form that's provided. And then the general manager reviews and signs off on that. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with that policy or practice at this point, but it's just an area where we could look at if there's an interest. And then the other, the other thing to think about is, do we want to revisit this annually? Or because the compensation amount is allowed to be increased annually, but that would take, in my read of the, of the requirements, an annual action by the board. So do we want to put that on as sort of a practice each January? Or do we want to fix some things? Let's see how it works and then come back and revisit as needed. So those are areas of consideration. I'm going to pause there to take input.
Any input, anyone?
First off, thank you and Jared as well. Thank you for all the time put into this because this, this looks like a decent sized lift. So thank you. I, I do, I would like to support the ability to tie the eligible meetings to the list of appointments every year. And so that way we can work on the list of appointments should anything pop up, whether it's a ad hoc committee for something or where the case may be, we're not having to revisit the board policy all the time. I think annually for compensation is probably a little bit too frequent. Maybe at the COSA process, where are the rate strike process, we can revisit it there. But nothing longer than that, because I think, you know, we fall in the same trap when we did the rates. I mean, rates hadn't been increased for so long. It's when we go to make an adjustment to become modern, it's this big shock to the system. And so I would hate to see us continue that same practice with this.
Ranji.
Yeah, maybe my first and, and main response is being very clear on the categories for compensation. Just so nobody's uncertain about how those decisions are being made. I think it also provides helpful guidance for the review process.
Monty. Yeah, I mean, this is, thank you. I feel like we're doing some, and this continues in a spirit of doing a lot of, I don't want to say housekeeping, that we just need to do, to, to do, to not have big shocks as we're trying to catch up with things. I would agree with Director Sampson's comment that we, that we figure out some system by which we do this on a more regular basis. And I think, you know, tying things, I, I wouldn't see the, a, a compensation increase that would exceed what we are doing with, with COSA or, and with our staff. I think it would, I would imagine something that would be equal. So I think, and then being clear about the list of meetings and, you know, those that, that need to be attended, you know, in, in, in keeping with the restrictions of the meetings.
Great. Larry, Russell, any comments?
None in particular. I, I think it's an interesting review and need to think it through a little more carefully.
Right. I, I would also recommend that we have abundance of clarity and less subjectivity involved in this process. So I'm glad we brought it up. I'd like to have a firm change in our policy that board members are only compensated if they attend meetings that are on our board committee appointments list that is done annually. There can be exceptions, I guess. But if there are, I'd like to have more oversight from the board on those exceptions and not just kind of with the general manager's review. And maybe that would mean the board president would weigh in if it's conferences or others that are typical for other agencies to compensate. I'd like to have a lot more oversight on, on that and truly have them be exceptions. So I think that would help reduce spend by the district and have more clarity about the decision-making. In regards to the dollar amount, I do not think this is a good time to have a dramatic increase. I don't think that looks good on us and I don't think it's right. And I don't think our compensation is out of whack with other agencies. I would be open to have a regular increases as is warranted by the law. And if that's the 5% or CPI or COSA, however we think about it, I think going forward, that makes sense. But not having a big jump in our own pay is, that's not something I would, I would support right now. Is that clear, what I was recommending, Molly?
I think so. I do want to make sure that I'm hearing from other board members on the compensation amount. I don't think I heard a lot on that.
Yeah, I can start. I, I didn't say anything about it. In general, I, 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 I agree with what, what Jed is proposing there. I'm not sure that this is a great time for us to be making a big change. We're still trying to, I think, you know, sort out the impacts of the rate increase on our, on our customers. It's going to take us, you know, as we've discussed, a year really to understand what those impacts are. I don't want to do it on a month by month basis. But until we know that, I don't, I'm not comfortable really making a big change in our compensation. I do, Jed, I do want to, with, with respect to approving the, or the ad hoc items, the ones that are not listed. I, I'm a little hesitant about having a, a, a board member participate in that just because of possibilities. And I'm not saying that would happen here, but maybe in the future of conflicts of interest.
I think that it would be the president would only review items that is not theirs that are exceptions.
Yes, but if, if we were ever, if we were ever in a situation where board members were in disagreements, there's a potential to influence what others.
Then the other way to do it would be to have abundant clarity and have no, no exceptions.
That's what I lean towards.
Yeah, that'd be fine with that.
And I, and I did, as you can note, I did flip back to the slide that talks about the legal requirements and allowances. Specifically, the government code section that talks about what's allowed for compensation. It does include conferences or training. It does, you know, the other occurrences as adopted in a board policy. So I think what I'm hearing is, is clarity is important. I agree that our policy as drafted could be more clear. And so what I'm proposing to do is take the information I'm hearing today. You'll note that it's not a review and refer item. I didn't think that we would be ready for that. This is a first real look that we've had. But take the information, prepare a draft based on sort of my research and some comments I'm hearing, and prepare something for review at another FAC meeting. So we could continue this process of really looking at what, what does that list potentially look like? What do those categories look like? Do they feel clear enough? And then with respect to, so am I, I'm going to pause because if anybody wants to.
That works for me.
Something different.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I just want to say on the compensation thing, I think it's, it's very awkward for us to self.
Absolutely.
Give ourselves promotions. It, it looks very, it just optically looks wrong at the outset. And I, and I share that. And, and especially in the, in the context of us having raised rates, the idea of then increasing our, you know, our, our, our compensation looks, again, looks inappropriate. At the same time, I'm, I want to think beyond the, the members of the board that are here today and ask ourselves, when it comes to serving on a board, I mean, we, we spend vastly more time than what we're compensated for. And, and as, as people who have professional lives, we, if we were paid at, at a, at a rate commensurate with our, our, our other work that we do, again, it would be vastly more. I want to be thoughtful of future members that may not have the financial resources to be able to just dedicate time without any compensation or, or something that's very substandard. I think it, in a, in a way, as an equity issue, that we, that our compensation should at least be commensurate with, with what public service looks like elsewhere. And to do it in some way that, that, that allows that to be adjusted for time without, without having to come back and have this awkward tension every single time. So I wonder whether, for, I, I agree right now is not the time to, to increase board compensation. But maybe there's something we could do where it is tied to, to our COSA increases for our staff. And I don't know if that's a, a way to, to do it in an automated way or something so that we can break the, the tension that, that, that occurs, keep it fair and commensurate with what, what occurs for our staff and probably would keep pace with what other agencies would do.
No, I appreciate the question and I, and I thought about this issue and you're right. Board members are put in an awkward position. It's public agency-wide situation. And, but, but there's also this accountability requirement built into the law that the way that I'm reading the statute, it has to happen annually. And that's because there's an interest in maintaining that accountability. So you, you are kind of between a little bit of a rock and a hard place. If I, if I could, one idea that I like to propose for consideration is, you know, seeing that we're so far behind and, and also Vice Chair Schmidt, Schmidt, I, that's why I wanted to make the statement that I did to recognize all the work that the directors do that's so far beyond, you know, these categories that we're looking at. You know, reviewing all of these board and agenda packages, meeting with your constituents, you know, educating yourself on all of these really complex issues. And, and this is, you know, just a drop in the bucket. And it's, it's not, and I, I think in the staff report, it calls out, it's, it's not, it, it's important and people do pay attention to it because of the public, you know, transparency and accountability as elected officials, but it's not a significant expense related to all of the things that the district takes on. That, that doesn't mean that it's not important to be careful. So with that, I would say, because we do have an annual adoption requirement, I, I actually think one idea is to increase it this year incrementally. We've fallen off for a number of years. We, you're right that there's a, you know, there's been a, a sort of, since 2016, really nothing done because of the awkwardness of the issue. And so we could look back and, and try to take sort of an incremental increase. It wouldn't be jumping, and I can forward to the slide here. It wouldn't be jumping all the way to the $281 per event. And it could be something more incremental this year. We could put in there that we could revisit it maybe on an every other year for a while or not less than every four years. We could build that into the policy just to kind of remind ourselves that we want to take a look at this. So we don't have this, you know, big gap in, in attention to these issues. So I, I don't know how the board feels about that, but I think that's maybe a little bit of a middle ground to what you're saying, Vice Chair Schmidt, in trying to not ignore the issue completely, but also be considerate.
Yeah, I wouldn't be in favor of doing any change right now. I'd, I'd be fine if we want to approve a change in some number of years in the future that doesn't directly impact all of us. So whether it's two years or four years or three years, whatever the number is, and have the adjustment impact future board members, that's fine. I just don't think I'm comfortable doing that right now.
I think, I think Monty's, are, Monty's, you know, argument that we do have to consider this in the light of other people that might be interested in the board and that may not have the same opportunities to dedicate this much time. That's, that's a powerful consideration. I think, you know, given that perspective, I, I, I am, you know, that makes, that makes me certainly more open to considering an increase. If in parallel, we again clarify what's eligible for payment so that, you know, it's clear that we're also putting checks on the process or doing our best to put checks on the process.
I think it's also important to remember there is a, a cap by law of 10 meetings a month. So there's a very finite amount that this money can go up. And when you look at it from that perspective, it doesn't seem as significant as just a blank check. And so I think that's important to be able to do. I was pretty disappointed that we couldn't do a per diem. I think that solves a lot of the issues that we're facing. But even with a nominal increase, and what I mean by nominal is, you know, we don't need to be near the top. We don't need to even be, you know, close to that. But at the same time, I just don't want us to fall behind after more and more years of this because 2016 is a much earlier date than a lot of these districts have been updating their numbers. And so my question, we will, why are they doing it with frequency? And I think they're trying to solve the problem we're facing right now. And so looking at that perspective, I don't think we need a big shock and I don't expect us to be at the top. I, I wouldn't feel comfortable being at the top anyways. But even with North Marin at, at the 276, percentage-wise, it's a significant change. And so a little bit to keep us in the game, I think, prospectively makes sense to me.
I wonder, I, I, I don't think we're, I, I don't, I'm not interested in, in, I, I think myself right now making a, a, a move to make an increase, a proposed one right now. I think understanding the, how maybe other districts have, have they come up with, do they have a, a board policy where every X number of years they revisit it? It'd be, I don't know if you know that off the top of your head, probably not. This is a lot of rate, great research. I hate to ask you to do more research, but are we trying to, you know, come up with a solution here that maybe others have, have come up with creatively? I think holding off until our, until our next budget, I mean, until our, at least the next fiscal year, so that we can see, you know, how this year has progressed and so forth. I think, you know, and then coming up with something that at least helps us to try to address this on a more regular basis. And, and again, tying it to, you know, to our cost of living increases that are commensurate with our staff, but obviously not exceeding the 5%. But something that, again, is reasonable, doesn't kick the can down the road and create problems for, again, for future boards to have to address with an even larger gap. I just think that's, that's not very fair to the, to future board members that have to address the, what will become a growing problem. It's something akin to what we have addressed with our, with our maintenance, where we basically said, we've got to figure out some way to keep it in line and manage it responsibly going forward. So I think we need some sort of path here because this will just become a bigger and bigger number over time.
Yeah.
Larry, Russell, do you have any comments? And I'll come back to you, Ranji.
Only to thank Molly for her assessment and to reiterate that it is a very, very small expenditure from the district standpoint.
Ranji.
Thanks Jed. Yeah, I, I think, actually, I, I, I don't know that it's so complicated. It's like, we need to do a lot of research to figure out how to make changes. I think, I think if we're going to do something, let's get going, you know? I, I, so I'm, 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 I'm not in favor of postponing this for another year. I think we've recognized there are some good reasons for addressing this. Again, I'll come back to just the very basic one of providing potentially more opportunity for people that would like to do this type of service. So we can set some good guidelines around that, some good, good checks, but let's, let's move.
Molly, I, I, I'm going to add one more comment. So I, I, I'll go back to my recommendation of having the board committee appointments list be clear and firm. If in your additional research, and I'm fine with you doing that, you come up with other items, whether it's, you know, a, a major conference or, you know, Washington DC effort. If there's other items that are, that you think you'd recommend, let's be clear about them, identify them. The public should know that this will be most likely a reduction in compensation opportunities. There'll probably be fewer meetings because we're going to be taking some things that are a little bit more subjective off, likely. And I am double firm that I am not in favor of increasing board compensation rates now. I think the earliest I would recommend doing it would be in the next budget cycle, which is 18 months from now.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I'm going to absorb all of that input. I'm not hearing exact clarity, but what I will do is my best job to interpret and apply something to a revised policy to bring forward for discussion. And I'm sure we'll have a, you know, robust discussion at that point and another opportunity to, to look at these issues. So thank you for your input.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to our next policy.
Well, I think, oh, next policy or?
Yes.
Okay, yep.
Yep. So that was the first. This is the second. This is our board travel reimbursement. So let me just stop and clarify. What we were talking about is compensation to the directors directly for their time at events, meetings, conferences, or whatever it is on the list, the actual compensation for their time. This is about reimbursing expenses incurred by our directors for district work, right? So we do have a board policy. So we do have a board policy for this. It's board policy number 41, and it was last approved in 2006. The purpose is to establish a consistent policy for authorizing attendance and travel reimbursement for expenses at conferences, trainings, meetings, or other district business. The travel authorization is limited to conferences, meetings, other functions from which the district derives a specific benefit through attendance. And I did put the actual language in there, so everybody can take a look at that. And then the directors must substantiate their expenses with original receipts. What's reimbursable? Air travel at coach or economy rates, private vehicles at IRS mileage rates. There's an encouraging encouragement for carpooling, which there would only be one reimbursement then, right? And public transportation. There's also meal allowances not to exceed $52 per day, including tax and tip. And that's based on the breakdown breakfast, lunch, and dinner, as you see, and based on departure and return times. It's pretty specific about that, actually. Lodging when you're out of the the region or air state, obviously. And you must, or the board of directors required by policy, submit receipts and verification of policy complaints within 10 days of return to the finance division for reimbursement requests. The reimbursement requests are reviewed by the general manager. There are legal requirements for reimbursements as well, and those are in government code sections 53232.2 and .3. Those are applicable to all public agencies generally. So there's not as much of a distinction here as with the compensation. Reimbursement is allowed pursuant to policy adopted by the legislative board at a public meeting. We've checked that box. Must specify the types of events eligible and reasonable reimbursement rates or defer to IRS publication 463. And it's for travel and lodging and but those must use the group rates at conferences is if available. So a lot of conferences do block rates for their hotel rooms, for example. And as those are available, we're supposed to avail ourselves to that as directors. Additional costs above these limits may be incurred at the member's own expense. And then there's an expense report required and provided by the district, which is a public record. I want to remind all of the directors and the public, and it's required to be filed within a reasonable period of time by law. And board members should report out about the event that they attend to. And I think we've heard from our directors and they attend conferences or go back to DC, for example. There's been good communication, I think, to the public on those on those events. Comparable agencies and and how they approach this, it's a little harder to find and a little more nuanced. So I tried to do just kind of a summary for us here. Alameda County has reasonable expenses reimbursed for district business with prior board approved travel. Contra Costa, anything over $300 requires prior board approval and is reimbursed by state and federal law with receipts. Eastern says for district business, not to exceed $500 per day, excluding conferences, conference fees and airfare. So that's meaning separate from $500, those paid separately. North Marin with prior board approval consistent with IRS publication 463. Western Municipal with prior board approval, any reasonable expenses consistent with IRS accounting plan. I'm thinking that's IRS publication 463, but there might be another guidance document out there. And then West Basin just says for necessary district business reasonable reimbursements. So there's a bit of a gamut there as well. I actually think, just to give my subjective opinion to start, that our board travel reimbursement policy is is in pretty good shape. It meets the legal requirements. There are some areas that we could consider revision. We could update to assure consistency deference to state law requirements, just to make sure we're checking those boxes. We could update the meal reimbursement to be consistent with the IRS publication 463 and eliminate the specific numeric amounts as those become stale over time. And the IRS publication 463 not to add a layer of complication to the process does look at region by region, actual reimbursement rates. So if you're going to one area over another, you know, that may make sense. And they're actually not that far off from where we are in our current policy, interestingly, but it would be, you know, it would automatically sort of keep pace. We could eliminate the telephone reimbursement charges. I really think those are potentially obsolete, even though they're allowed by law. And then other considerations, we could update the policy to provide greater specificity as to which events are eligible for travel reimbursement. You did see the definition in our current policy. Question as to whether we're comfortable or happy with that at the moment. And we could provide an amount over which board approval would be required. So maybe to say any travel outside of the United States, any travel outside of the state, or any travel above a certain amount. So those are some areas for consideration. And I'll pause there.
Comments? Monty?
I I mean, I'm glad to hear that you can think we're in good shape as we are. It means that we've been giving important thought to this over time and I think that yeah, I mean, I I I just want to make sure that we're just, we're we're being thoughtful and reasonable about what it is that we are compensating and and making sure that it's really of value to the district. And and I believe that these things are. I should start off with the premise that that when we make these efforts to travel and to communicate and to learn and collaborate, that these do really provide substantial tangible benefits and economic benefits to the district. And so I think it sounds like we're in pretty good shape and I'm open to what other board members have to think about proposed changes.
I think keeping with the spirit of the board compensation, just clearly defining what's eligible and what's not eligible for travel, I think would be a good change to this piece.
Similarly. I think Molly, go ahead.
Sorry, Larry. Yeah, just similar. I just wanted, I don't, you know, we you didn't identify any major inconsistency here, Molly. So that's good. That's great. And I think, yeah, as as Matt said, just maybe ensuring that what is eligible for travel is what should be eligible, what makes the most sense for all of us. That would be good.
Larry?
Yeah, I I think Molly's correct. I think it's kind of a ain't broke, don't fix it. The general manager has to sign off. I I think he's enough of a gatekeeper. Or she in if in the future, they are enough of a gatekeeper to deal with these issues. I I don't think this is a complicated one. And I I think the district is reimbursed with the information that's gained in these meetings. Just for for instance, I have never charged airfare to the district, although I've traveled on district business a number of times. And the reason for that is that it's it's a reasonable split in my mind between the fact that I run a private company that does the same kind of business and the the district's business. So I that's how I differentiate them. Airfare is always paid by the company. And I will at times look to the district to reimburse some expenses on the trip. So that's how I've handled it in my 20 years on the board.
Great. Can you go back to the slide with your recommendations? I like the idea of having us point to state and IRS laws and requirements and that we defer to them. I think that's a good way to button up what we're doing. I like the idea of eliminating telephone charges. And I I think it'd be good for you to come up with a policy for when we would require board approval, if it's over a certain amount. I don't know if it's over $1,000 or some level if it's higher, but otherwise I am good with the general manager's approval and discretion for these things. Triple the recommendation from Ranji and and Matt about being clear about what what conferences or types of conferences or situations we would approve for this. Thank you for bringing it up.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I think I'm hearing minor tweaks potentially, but light touch on this one. So I think the same approach that we're we're looking at with the compensation policy, maybe bring back a red line at the same time to kind of look at some slight modifications, clarifications here and there. Okay. Okay, as if we haven't packed enough today, I wanted to preview some things that have been on my mind and I think on some of your lists for future items. Dual noticing of committee and special board meetings, and I am appreciative of all of you being here today, actually, because this is a really important discussion for the full board. But I did want to raise this issue because I know we last looked at it in July. This is a practice that this district takes that's a bit unusual compared to other public agencies. We've talked about it extensively. We do have, you know, the last action being continue the practice. We like being able to have, you know, the full board participate, but I did want to raise the issue today to allow input on whether you want me to bring it to a future meeting for discussion once again.
Comments?
I think, you know, I know this is one of these really interesting issues that we keep coming back at. And I just look at at the conversation today as an example, and this is not an anomaly. I I find that, you know, these, you know, if we were, if if the communication was only limited to the chair and the co-chair, that would be Jed and myself and would never hear anything from Matt and from Ranji and from Larry. And I think that that the lack of of dialogue around this, I think, doesn't strengthen us. I think it weakens us. I think it would weaken frankly, understanding and and input that's really valuable. I think it the input that we've received today from from all the board members has made this a much better discussion and I think helping to set guidance and direction. So I I I find that these committee meetings are extremely valuable when all the the board members attend. So I I it's hard to, if if I put on the lens of what is best for our community, which is always the foremost thought in my mind and it is the guiding principle of of our of what we do. I think the community benefits from us being here. So I don't. I'd like to see us have a practice where the board members still continue to be here as they as they individually, if they're not on the, if they're not the chair or the co-chair, if they don't see something on the agenda that is of interest, then they should feel free and and to not attend. But if there's something there that they're they can provide input on or want to provide input on, I think it's worth their time. And I and I think it's worth the the district's time to have attendance. So that's kind of my thought about it.
Ranji?
I think, yes, everything Monty has said, and I will acknowledge that it, you know, I struggle sometimes with fitting it in. But as Monty has noted, you know, I have the option also to not attend when it's just not feasible. So I think what I I I'd look for most is just a decision so that we're not constantly saying, let's bring this up in six months. So let's just make a decision about which way to go. I'm I would be supportive of either option, but I think I am definitely swayed by the the points that that Monty makes.
Yeah, I definitely appreciate what you're saying about all the information and being able to input as well. And then also too, completing the first year on the board, it's been easy to accelerate our, I guess, perspective of what's going on through multiple touches. And also appreciating too that the district has been, this has been a battle rhythm of how operations are moving. You know, we have the luxury of attending these meetings and turning them into board meetings so that we can reduce the time spent on our regular board meetings, which is pretty much the opposite of what most people do, which is interesting. But can I go back to what you were saying earlier about someone who would like to participate that might have to work during the day? And if we have all of these meetings right now to to really flush out items that we're going to be putting on a regular board meeting to, you know, enhance the size of our consent calendar and reduce the number of actual discussion items, that's going to eliminate a lot of people that would like to be able to do this too, or or leave them left behind. And I think there are some really important things, you know, Larry, your your comments earlier on in the in our first year of service about talking the importance of the operations committee and how that's really going to help us get up to speed is was taken and and also appreciated through the through the first year. And I think something like the finance as well. I'm not sure all of our committees need to be dual noticed. And what I mean by that is if there are some important ones, let's look at those. But if we don't have the other ones, if the other ones rise to not the importance, but the ability to flush that stuff out in a regular board meeting is is where I would lean. A hybrid move back to where to what we're doing right now, just because I think it does create a potential burden as well for future board members that wouldn't be able to get into this sync and this rhythm to do it.
Larry, Russell, any comments?
Yeah, a couple. A decision was made, Ranji, in July of 2022. So the previous board decided this was a good idea. I think it's a little bit legal, this discussion, probably over most of our heads, frankly. And I I think the issue is, as I don't remember now, Monty said, it's in the view of the board member, you know, if you wish to attend, you attend. If you don't, you don't. And and you know, Matt said it was a board meeting, it's not a board meeting because no decisions are made at these committee meetings. That's the purpose of the referral to the board. The the vote is actually at the board meeting in the evenings. So and any of these can be brought up for discussion. The so, you know, all of it's done at the board meeting, the regular board meeting, the normally notice board meeting, not at these committee meetings, other than the discussion. And the purpose of these meetings is the committee meetings is to reduce the amount of time in the board meeting. Otherwise, a board meetings would all be six hours long. So that's the benefit of this. I I support the policy. I don't see any real issue with it. And I I like I said, I think the decision was made in July of 2022.
Yeah, I am in general, first of all, thank you for bringing all these items up. This is clean up and important governance work that we're doing and 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 fairly broad. And I know we have other policies we're going to review in in the near future. The the I I'm not a giant fan of doing things very much differently than every other like agency, and it seems like that's the case here. I see the benefit. I almost feel like they should all do this because there is benefit to having everyone in the room, but we don't really line up with how others do. I know there has been deep legal review and and it sounds like we're all buttoned up in that regard. I'm supportive of Matt's suggestion that we look at which that not every single committee meeting necessarily has to be a dual notice board meeting. And that that we should review which ones should be, which I think many do. Some of the big expenditures that are discussed in some of the operations meetings and finance meetings and the audit, et cetera. But but I think there's some that actually probably do not need to be board meetings. And frankly, it's a it's a burden on the public too, because it's a board meeting and they want to be able to chime in and make sure they're they're available. So I would be open to review and reducing the number that we have and really being thoughtful about 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 which ones should be.
Jed K offer just one more comment. One of the benefits of the committee meetings is be able to not run them like board meetings and have open discussion where we're communicating, having discussion with staff and taking feedback. Technically, with a board meeting, we should be following Robert's rules and we should be conducting the meetings such as a board meeting. But if we're going to try to call the board meeting, run it as a committee meeting, I think that's where we're running into a little bit of friction for me personally, because I would like to be able to see stuff get flushed out through open dialogue as opposed to just a more rigid board meeting.
Okay. Are there other comments? I don't want to jump in before everybody's had their.
I I I Sorry, Larry, I'll I'll go. I I think the suggestion of potentially moving to a hybrid approach kind of meets, you know, we meet things in the middle. I think that sounds really great. So maybe that would be the next step is to determine how to structure that hybrid approach.
Larry, comment?
Yes, what I was about to say is that three of you are still brand new to the board. And you may feel more comfortable after a year, but trust me, there's a lot more to learn. And I think the value of encouraging attendance at these meetings is the only way you're going to get caught up to speed. So I So I would encourage you to go the status quo. The option, you can still attend the committee meetings, but you sit in the audience. And you cannot speak, at least not as a participating member. You can speak as a comment, but not as a active member. So I'm inclined not to rock the boat for at least another year. And I would suggest perhaps review the discussion that occurred in July of 2022.
Okay. I
What do you want to do with this, Molly?
Absolutely crystal clear. I think that what I'm going to do is bring a review of the item. This was a discussion to determine whether we want to review the item. I'm hearing enough discussion on just that question alone to, to dig into it again. And we'll see if staff can consider some variation on the theme and we'll bring it back.
Yeah, I, I actually don't feel super strongly about this, but I do think we should have clarity. I think we should bring it up in a board meeting. I think you heard two options from the group and we can vote on it and move on.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know how much leverage you have on us, but I, I think you do in saying putting something to vote, just pushing us to make a decision about which of these options to pursue would be great.
I appreciate that and we'll take that back and see what we can do. And you will see it again then, just so be prepared for that. Next, I wanted to propose, you know, I, I've been listening to the board, asking for, you know, different sort of information and trying to get a sense of what would be helpful. This doesn't have to happen. So I did put it as proposed, but I'm, I'm looking at, you know, maybe a Brown Act review, some highlights from the Brown Act. Some of the areas can be confusing. A review at an FAC might be helpful to just remind ourselves what are some of the nuances, in particular of the new rules that were more recently adopted for teleconferencing in and when that can happen versus the old rules for teleconferencing in and when that can happen, et cetera. So that was a proposal that I wanted to bring forward. If I don't hear objection, I'll plan on it.
Yeah, I thought of this as more like training. Is that the way you're thinking about it? So it's Brown Act campaign law and also frankly, communications training. I think, I think we could benefit from some more professional guidance.
Embedded in the Brown Act training is inherent communications training, but we can look at how we might strengthen that and broaden that. Yes. So.
I would ask if we include Public Records Act request training into that piece as well.
And I, I do want to be cognizant of balancing, you know, your time is important and precious as we've just talked about. So I don't want to overdo this in the public setting, but I do, where it's helpful and where the board's interested, I'm happy to, to bring some stuff forward. So I'm hearing a nod, seeing a nod, hearing a nod. Okay. The other area where I thought might be helpful, because we are in a campaign year, at least for some folks, is the campaign law review. We did talk about some new rules regarding campaign contributions and how that might have a disqualifying effect. We could review those for the board as well as some other areas that might be helpful. Some restraints and legal restrictions on the district and what the district can do with respect to mass mailing campaigns, et cetera. So I'm planning on bringing something like that forward as well. And then lastly, and, and this is pretty comprehensive, actually, even though it's one item, is the board handbook review. There's a lot packed into the board handbook. And I know that the three new members, and it was only adopted shortly after, I think you joined the board, Vice Chair Schmidt. And it was a big exercise to, to adopt that and have a formal board handbook in place. But for those who are new, that hasn't been, you know, there was no board discussion or really thorough review. Of course, you all have it. I'm sure you've all read it thoroughly multiple times. But joking aside, I think it might be a good idea to, to kind of go through that. There are a lot of nuggets, covers a lot of area. There may be other policies that are still on the books that are really best incorporated into the, the board handbook or even eliminated. So that's a kind of could be a small streamlining process as well as a review. And looking for areas of possible update. Now, given that it was adopted three years ago, I think it's in pretty good shape, but there's some, some areas that I've heard for clarification that could be helpful.
Great.
And that's, that's really all I have.
I would just simply say, yes, this is great. And this is a, again, really appreciate, you, we've, I know we've been expressing a desire to touch on these different points. So thank you for coming back with this. And I think each of these things, the Brown Act review and the campaign law review, maybe if those could be done at the same time, you know, there'd be some time efficiency there. You, you, you decide, you, you, we, we look to you to help us learn what, and review what we need to know. And to, of course, make sure that we're, we're keeping the district in the right place. I think the, the board handbook will, would be good to look at and review after those trainings because I think, again, it would help inform board thought about, one important aspect of the board handbook is, is embedding many of these other responsibilities and limitations. So I think that would be a good idea to come back at that at a, at a later point in time.
Larry, any comments?
Yes, only a quick one. What did you mean by disqualifying issues around campaign laws?
So the, the new laws that went into effect and do have conflict of interest built in for any campaign contributions received in excess of $250 if a particular item then comes before the board within 12 months or a certain timeframe on ex parte types of, or quasi judicial types of approvals, which would include, in our case, award of vendor contracts, for example, would include potential settlements. Those are agreements and would include pipeline extension agreements, for example, because those are one of the rare kind of ex parte or quasi judicial types of entitlements that the board does consider. The director would be precluded from participating unless they returned that amount within a certain timeframe of learning of the item coming forward. So we did have that discussion a couple, the beginning of last year, I believe, that did have some impact on some of our new board members. And it would just be a refresher for everyone to look at the new laws. I don't have it in front of me. That's, but the idea is to, to refresh all of our, our understanding of that.
Okay, it's, it's the same issues that came up in the last round.
And possibly a couple of additional, and possibly a, a couple of additional issues that, that we would throw in for good measure, if that's.
Oh, that's all fine, but I'm just curious of anything significant. That's basically the same issues.
Okay, yes.
All right. Just curious. Thanks.
Of course. Okay.
Sounds good.
I think I've exhausted my time here. So thank you.
Public comment on the review of board compensation and board travel policies, et cetera?
There are none. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Larry Minikis. I apologize. Go ahead, Mr. Minikis.
Yeah, good morning. Forgive me. It's a little difficult for me to speak this morning. I'm on medication. But I want to say that really it's easier for an outsider to speak to this issue in some ways. And it's been recognized for decades that the board puts in a tremendous amount of work. And being compensated this small amount has no impact whatsoever on the finances of the district or impact on the rate payers. However, the optics are such that when the board raises rates substantially and then gives the impression of rewarding itself for, for raising those rates, that's where it's, it's the issue. And it's, it's really optics, everything that you've been talking about and you're thinking about doing is, is, is upfront. And, and forgive me. I'm having a little difficulty. Let me, let me just put it that way. But that, I, I feel that finding a way to generally increase board compensation is a good policy based on what Monty said much earlier in that regard. With that, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yes, we have one more.
And, and if anyone in the audience, I, I think the procedure is there's a form to fill out and you give it to the secretary and then they'll call you to the, to the, to make a comment.
I agree with one of Larry's points that it's optically difficult for the board to take a position in favor of rate raises. And in a, in one sense, it's a conflict of interest to ask the board whether they should receive rate raises. Because if they increase it, it looks like they're doing themselves a favor. And if they don't increase it, it looks like they're doing themselves a public reputation favor. So I think it would be best if the rate raises were determined by someone other than the board directors themselves, if possible.
Great. Okay. Uh, thank you, Molly. We'll move towards adjournment. We have an upcoming Finance Administration Committee meeting on February 15th, Thursday. And with that, we will adjourn. Thank you.